Excuse me, and welcome to the regular meeting of the San Mateo City Council. This is October 18th, it is now 7:00 p.m. My name is Deputy Mayor Rick Bonilla, and I will call this meeting to order. I want to invite everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, we may be seated. Madam Clerk, would we please have the roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Gofalls.
Here.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
And Mayor Rodriguez is absent due to a scheduling conflict.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to read the pronouncement that we make remark regarding the COVID-19 regulations around how we do our virtual meeting now. Due to the health orders in place currently, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item, if you wish to comment and you're signed into Zoom, then you can use the raise your hand feature and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, you can press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Tonight, we will hold a public hearing for item 13, which is the 2022 Solid Waste Collection Rates Increase. Protest letters will still be counted, provided they have been received by the time the public hearing is closed. That will be the public hearing on item number 13 when we reach that item. Written protests can be dropped off at City Hall, which is located at 330 West 20th Avenue, through the email slot on the O'Farrell entrance by the visitor parking lot. So with that said, we will now move to the ceremonial items. And the first item we have is the Outstanding Citywide Volunteer Honorees. And I call on Denise Garcia, a management analyst, to please introduce the volunteer honorees.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And good evening, everyone and city council members. My name is Denise Garcia, and I'm the management analyst in the city manager's office who oversees the citywide volunteer program. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight the 2021 Outstanding Volunteer Honorees selected this year to be the faces for all citywide volunteering. Although our volunteer program faced challenges due to that pandemic, we still had approximately 1,530 volunteers lend a helping hand totaling 33,500 hours of volunteer service. Today, we are fortunate enough to highlight four individuals from these different departments and three volunteer groups who shined during this very difficult time. First, we have Gayate from the library. Gayate began volunteering at the library in February 2019 as a lead instructor of the library's Girls Who Code program. When COVID-19 hit, Gayate and her team quickly pivoted from in-person robotic classes to an online Python class. Gayate's commitment and dedication to the community has helped introduce and improve free computer science education in a friendly, supportive environment, and she serves as a role model to young people interested in computer science. The library's Girls Who Code program thrives because of Gayate's innovation endeavors and commitment. Give it up for Gayate.
Thank you so much, Denise. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this recognition. I wanted to take this moment to thank my teammates Lauren and Sinduja for the amazing things that they've done while teaching these coding classes. Lauren currently is actually a freshman at MIT, and she designed and taught the entire web development curriculum. And Sinduja is a software engineer at Amazon. And in addition to teaching the classes, she also worked with our advanced students and helped to come up with their own independent study projects. Finally, I wanted to thank Michelle and Marcia and San Mateo Public Library for partnering with us to provide the infrastructure and the publicity for our classes and helping us to inspire more girls to be coders. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have King. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, next we have Tim. Tim has been a literacy volunteer tutor with Project Read since 2015. He currently provides free confidential one-to-one literacy tutoring to three to four students per week. Tim has recently moved to Oregon but continues to volunteer and tutor students via Zoom. Some of his students have met major personal goals such as securing a better job and preparing for the citizenship test. Tim has also helped many others with general reading, writing, and conversation skills. Tim is enthusiastic, positive, and a huge asset to the Project Read program. Give it up for Tim.
Tim, go ahead.
So thank you very much for the volunteer recognition. I'd also like to thank Dona Soltani and her Project Read staff at the San Mateo Public Library, and my group of students whose enthusiasm and dedication make tutoring fun. Once again, I appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
And next, we have King from Parks and Rec. King was one of the 27 CERT volunteers who assisted with lunch deliveries for senior citizens in 2020. When the lunch delivery service ended in July 2020 and we switched to a grab-and-go program, King continued to assisting at the senior center and at King Community Center, helping to hand out lunches to the seniors in their cars. Rain or shine, wind or calm, King has been there to help give our seniors that much-needed human contact as well as a hot lunch for the day. To this day, King has volunteered over 100 hours in the grab-and-go program, serving over 2,000 senior meals. Give it up for King.
Thank you, everyone. I do want to just give a big shout-out to Caroline Denise, who are the people running the program. They allowed me to join them for the past year and a half. It's been a wonderful experience. They always make the effort to chat with the seniors. They're the ones who show me what true compassion is. I could see that the seniors truly enjoyed the lunch, and I'm just happy to tag along. So thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, King. Next, we have Matt from Police. Matt assists with range training for active law enforcement officers, reserve officers, and retired police officers. He has shown to have strong leadership skills and a fantastic work ethic. Matt was recently chosen to be a police volunteer on patrol due to his knowledge and expertise in traffic. With his new assignment as a police volunteer, combined with his reserve officer hours, which spans over a 37-year career, Matt has dedicated over 7,000 volunteer hours to the department and to the city of San Mateo. Give it up for Matt. And next, we have our group volunteers. We have Friends of the Library, which were the online book sale volunteers. Bob, Joy, and Jerilyn have been assisting with the Friends of the Library online sales program for many years and have performed at a very high level. Their assignments consist of fulfilling online sales, listing items on the website, and taking sold items to be shipped at the post office. Their efforts through the pandemic have helped the Friends of the Library sell materials and bring much-needed revenue to the library foundation. Give it up for Friends of the Library.
Thank you.
Please, yeah.
Thank you very much for those of us who are online booksellers for the Friends of the Library. We all delight in taking donated items, items donated to the library that can't go into the collection and seeing if we can list them on Amazon for more money than we can sell them for on the floor or at the sale. And then when something is sold, we ship it out. And in a normal year, we're able to raise about $20,000 that goes directly to the library for the collection. This year, even with the severely limited donations because of COVID, we were able to give $4,500. So we really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
That's incredible. Thanks, Joy. And next, we have Police Activities League, better known as PAL. Parents and members of the community stepped up and volunteered their time to help coach and support the Junior Giants Baseball League this past summer. Volunteer coaches, assistant coaches, and team parents played a significant role in making this season a success. They brought energy, enthusiasm to every practice and game, and encouraged every player to do their best while making sure everyone had a fun and positive experience. Give it up for PAL.
Thank you, Denise. I just wanted to highlight our volunteers for this Junior Giants season this past summer. We obviously didn't have the 2020 season due to COVID, so it was really great to see all the participation, not only from the kids and the players, but also the volunteers, because this league is very volunteer-heavy, and we wouldn't be as successful as we are without all these parents and community members stepping up to take on such a time-consuming commitment. So I appreciate them so much, and thank you for having me.
Thanks, Alex. And last but not least, we have the Team Up to Cleanup Group from Public Works. Linda and Sabrina approached me asking if they could help the city by hosting community cleanups during the summer of 2020. Ever since they first brought the idea, they teamed up together and have committed themselves to leading monthly cleanups throughout San Mateo. They have a following of about 15 to 20 volunteers who are also committed and join their monthly cleanups to help keep San Mateo beautiful and debris-free. Our Team Up to Cleanup program would not be the same if it weren't for these two amazing volunteer leaders. Give it up for Team Up to Cleanup.
Thanks, Denise. I just want to say thank you to the city of San Mateo. When I was younger, I was born and raised in San Mateo, and I remember when I was in elementary school at Parkside, we had this program, and it was like, keep San Mateo beautiful. And so, yes, I approached Denise, asking if we can revitalize that campaign, saying that there was trash kind of throughout the streets randomly. And so that's how I came to volunteer and into this opportunity. And just want to say thank you to Denise. She's been amazing to work with, as well as Roxanne, and also the people that help pick up the trash after all done. So I believe that was Bradley as well as Saliva. So thank you so much for the opportunity, and I look forward to continuing the Team Up to Cleanup, Cleanup.
Thanks, Sabrina. So thank you all to all the volunteers. Your service is very much appreciated, and we just want to say a big thank you to you all.
Great. Thank you very much, Denise, and thank you very much to all of the volunteers for all of your hard work throughout the year, making San Mateo the great place that it continues to be. So now we move on to ceremonial item number two, which is the Children's Environmental Health Month Proclamation. I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I think it's possible we have somebody to receive it, speak for a second about it. Let me first read the proclamation. It's the Children's Environmental Health Month Proclamation. Whereas, the aim of Children's Environmental Health Month is to raise awareness about the importance of clean air and water, safe food and consumer products, healthy environments, and stable climates to children's health and development. And whereas, a statewide Children's Environmental Health Month was established on September 1st, 2021, through House Resolution 68 by the California State Assembly. And whereas, Children's Environmental Health Month provides a means to celebrate the progress of the children's environmental health movement and create an even stronger network of child health advocates. And whereas, Child Environmental Health Month encourages individuals and organizations to raise awareness and understanding of children's environmental health issues, seek improved protections for all children, and to perform acts of sustainability or environmental health wellness. And whereas, together, we can safeguard the health, safety, and well-being of our most precious resource, children. Therefore, I, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor of the city of San Mateo, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Children's Environmental Health Month. In San Mateo, we urge all citizens to observe this month with awareness raising in environmental health and stewardship activities to help create a healthier environment for our children. This will be signed by the mayor, Eric Rodriguez. It's dated today, October 18th. And so I ask, do we have Alexis Duran? Duran? Alexis Duran?
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, city council members, and supportive staff for allowing me to speak this evening and for proclaiming the month of October as Children's Environmental Health Month. My name is Alexis Duran, and I am a registered nurse, a master of public health student, and a member of the Alliance of Nurses for Healthy Environments. On behalf of all of us at California ANI, ANI is what we call ourselves, we'd like to thank Mayor Rodriguez and the San Mateo City Council for declaring October as Children's Environmental Health Month. As nurses who share a passion for creating healthy environments for all people, we are ecstatic about the proclamation as an opportunity to spread awareness and education on the current environmental health situation for our children. As nurses, we are aware that the quality of our air, water, food, and the chemicals in our everyday products, as well as the continued threat of climate change, is affecting the health of our children in this state. We believe that no parent should have to worry that the environment in which their children lives, learns, and plays is causing harm to their health, and no parent should have to worry more about their child's health than their more privileged counterparts. This is why the time to act is now. Children are our future, and they deserve to have a future that is healthy, equitable, and sustainable. Thank you again for your time and commitment to this very important cause. We are excited to continue this work with you, as we know that our children cannot do it for themselves. Thank you.
Alexis, I want to thank you very much for reaching out to us and asking us to help with this. Very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to ceremonial item number three, which is Fire Prevention Week. And I have a proclamation here also, and then it looks like we'll have interim deputy chief Matt Turterici, as well as possibly the fire marshal, Robert Marshall, to speak on this. So let me read this proclamation. Fire Prevention Week Proclamation. Whereas, the city of San Mateo is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting San Mateo. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are the greatest, at the greatest risk from fire. Home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019. According to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, city of San Mateo residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, the city of San Mateo residents will make sure their smoke, accommodation smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, the city of San Mateo residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, I, Eric Rodriguez, Mayor of the city of San Mateo, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and urge all of its citizens to learn the sounds of fire safety and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2021. And this will be signed by the mayor, Eric Rodriguez, dated October 18th, 2021. Thank you all very much. And which one of you would like to go first?
I will, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Bonilla and members of the council. I'm Robert Marshall, as you know, the fire marshal for San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. And I wanted to thank you for the proclamation today. Fire Prevention Week was actually a couple weeks ago, but as you know, we serve three cities, so I can't be multiple places at once, unfortunately. But it's still good to remind everybody, we try and look at Fire Prevention Week as actually a month-long activity anyway. One of the things that I like to point out is that Fire Prevention Week started as a result of the great Chicago fire, but there was another fire that actually started right around the same time in Peshtigo, Wisconsin, which was actually more deadly and much bigger. It was a wildland fire. And being that we're in California, I always like to bring attention to that, because up until just recently, that was the largest wildland fire ever in the United States. But now, obviously, we've got big fires of our own. Knowing the sounds of fire safety is very, very important. It's one of those things where we require there to be carbon monoxide alarms in homes as well as smoke detectors in homes. I can tell you, based on 30 years' experience, that the number of fires that I've been to where people have perished, in every single one of those cases, there was not a working smoke alarm. I've been on calls as well for carbon monoxide, and that can be just as deadly. It's not quite as deadly in California as it is in other places in the world, but I've lost a good friend to carbon monoxide poisoning, so it can happen in California. The alarm sounds are very different, and so we urge people to test their alarms just to make sure that they work, and also to make sure that they understand what sounds each one of them makes. And then take that opportunity to educate yourself and your family on what you would do if you heard either one of those sounds. So again, I wish to thank you for the proclamation, and I hope you have a good rest of your evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla and the members of the council, I'd also like to thank you for the proclamation. Very important, important month, important week, but October seems to be the month that we reflect on fire prevention. And fire prevention should be a yearly event, not just monthly or weekly. And I'm thankful for the time and effort and the proclamation as recognizing the importance of fire prevention in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that does it for the ceremonial items. We'll now move on to the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, please read the Consent Calendar.
With pleasure. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number five, Remote Teleconference City Council and Commission Meetings Authorization. Item number six, Office of Traffic Safety Grant Spending Plan. Item number seven, Fiscal Year 2021 to 22 Police Department Budget Amendment. Item number eight, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department Lease Agreement Amendment as amended. Item number nine, Solar Procurement for Public Facilities Peninsula Clean Energy Partnership. Item number 10, Personal Computer Replacements Purchase. Item number 11, Contracts with Contingency Component Update. And item number 12, California Renters Legal Advocacy and Education Fund et al. versus City of San Mateo et al. Agreement and Appropriation.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask if any member of the council would like to pull any item for discussion. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the same question of the public. Any member of the public wishing to pull one of these items for comment?
I see one hand, oh, they're all, the hands are down now.
Now is the time to raise your hand if you want to comment. Okay, well, in that case...
I'm looking approval of the Consent Calendar.
Motion made. Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gofalls.
I think you were just devoted. Um, yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Papin.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay. Next thing on the items on the agenda tonight is public comment. Next, members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda, that's not appearing on tonight's agenda, may address the city council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking action on any matter which is not on tonight's agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is listed to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later on the agenda. Do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Bonilla, we do have hands raised, and I'm going to mention that I will be watching the clock. It is now 7:25. So at 7:40, we'll stop public comment and can take it up later in the session. I'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
Our first speaker is Lorraine Schroeder.
Hello, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, can. We hear some background noise, though.
Okay. Okay, so I'm here with a bunch of my neighbors here on South El Dorado Street, and we have a lot of concerns about... We have 20 people here, over 20 people here. We have concerns about this asphalt overlay that's happening, that is going to happen. And I've actually, my family and I have lived on the street for over 53 years. We have currently concrete, we've had concrete all these years, and we've never had any problems, we've never had things to be patched unless there was work being done. And recently, I think it was in July, a bunch of work was done to change out the water piping for the firewater system, I believe. And there's been a lot of new cracks happening that have happened, a lot of dirt, a lot of asphalt, a lot of everything happening on our street. And we're concerned that we're not going to be able to keep our concrete. And we've done some research that the asphalt is going to be unsafe. We've gone to areas where this asphalt overlay has happened, and there's a lot of trip hazards with it, there's a lot of slip safety concerns with it. I have called and emailed over the years, because at the end of our street, we have concrete to asphalt. And I've had to call because there's been holes in the road, there's been ramps placed on the corners of each block, so that wheelchairs, bicycles, people and walkers can go walk across the street, but they haven't been able to because of all the pits, the holes, the tripping hazards, because of all the asphalt. And when I asked for a work order on it, it's taken three to four months to have it repaired. And I am, we are afraid that this is going to happen throughout the whole street if we have this asphalt overlay. And we'd like to keep our concrete. We found that we can be shaved down, and maybe cracks filled in with concrete, and we are happy to have that done. But we are greatly against this asphalt overlay.
Thank you very much for comments.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rich Hedges.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Bonilla. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
And the council members. I was not able to make the study session earlier, and I just wanted to comment on AB43, which in some ways correct the 85 percentile speed correction. It will allow us to lower speeds in some cases, and I would like to make a suggestion that I've made in the past, where we're building so many units of housing on Concar and on Delaware, those speed limits need to be lowered by five miles per hour on Grant from Concord, Concar to 19th Avenue, from Concar to the train station, and from Delaware and Concar to 17th. We're going to have a little over 2,000 units of housing in a very short distance when this is all built out. And the other suggestion that goes with this is that at Concar and Delaware, we put in what's called a scramble. I know the city council knows what a scramble is, but let me, for those that are listening, say it's when pedestrians walk anywhere they want to walk, and then the traffic is allowed to go in each direction. It's very, very good at getting people and cars through the intersection. It's very, very good at getting people and cars through the intersection very safely. I've been at those types of intersections in Los Angeles and San Francisco, they work quite well. Enough on that issue. I wanted to give a great thanks to Roxanne Murray and Denise. I received a call from Roxanne a couple of weeks ago asking me if I would like to have a crew come over and help with a cleanup. Our volunteers at Harbor Town had just done one along the lagoon, but I accepted it. We did it on Friday. A group of people from Lufonza, the airline, who were doing their public service came, some as far away as Antioch, and I could not believe what a job they did. A whole pickup load after we'd already done a cleanup, but I'm always concerned about the small pieces that we get from the peanuts, packing peanuts and other things that float, the tipperillos from cigars that have disintegrated, which are attractive to birds and stuff their claws to the point that they can't get nourishment. Some of you have seen the pictures of the birds when they've decayed and all the trash in their gullet. So they got on their hands and knees and their bellies and grabbed the stuff from under walkways and docks. I was absolutely taken away with it, and the city staff that helped with it were excellent, too. So I am so thankful for this help, and all of these volunteers should be sent, especially to their employer, a long email congratulating them on all the help they have done for our city and for the wildlife here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shane.
Hey, guys, how's it going? My name is Shane Cottle. My wife and I own the Spot On 25th. Where is it at? On 25th. I have two topics to point on. First one is, I appreciate you guys come down or put some effort into sending the parking patrol down there, because parking on 25th Avenue, if anyone's been down there, it's really rough. And we have the bump outs for COVID for the other restaurants. We couldn't have one because we're right at the crosswalk. That's okay. I'm not mad at the bump outs, but we do need some more patrol down there because people park for hours and hours on time. And I worked with Marcus Clark back in the day. They gave him and the city gave me a crew to work with the street. Rebecca Zito, we did a survey together, and it turned out that 40% of the people parked there are there more than six hours, and that really affects businesses. You can think like, if you come down 25th Avenue, you can't park there to come to Spot on 25th, the pizza place or anyplace. Okay, so I just appreciate a little bit more of concern on 25th Avenue as far as parking. My next concern is a big concern, and we've had our business open for over seven years, and it's about ready to close. There's someone named Scott Johnson, and I believe this topic is aware to you guys. He's put a lawsuit against us. This is the ADA handicap lawsuit that we're all aware of, and we're going to close our shop if we get hit one more time with anything else. So I'm asking the city to have a little bit of responsibility on this, because when we opened our cafe years ago, the city signed off on it. We did more than the 15% ADA compliance than we needed to because we care, and now we're getting hit. We're getting sued, and we're going to close down. I want to know why we weren't notified of the ADA changes, and also, I'm asking for your help, something. Give help, because we're getting ready, we're going to close down. They want $24,000 as a settlement, and I'm not the only one. There's thousands and thousands of businesses going to lose, and it's all restaurants. So my name is nicknamed the mayor of 25th Avenue by Susan Mannheimer, the former mayor, or not the former mayor, Chief of Police. There's a sandwich on our menu named after her. I've supported the city for years, and I'm there. I'm asking for your help, please.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you very much for your comments, Shane.
The next speaker is Ken Chin.
Hi, good evening, Deputy Mayor Bonilla and members of the city council. My name is Ken Chin, and I am speaking as an individual resident of the City of San Mateo. This past weekend, I was walking downtown and crossing El Camino at Third and El Camino, and to my pleasant surprise, I noticed the installation of the lead pedestrian interval on along El Camino in the downtown. For those who don't know what an lead pedestrian interval is or an LPI, it basically is a few seconds, the pedestrian signal turns on a few seconds before the green light for the vehicles, and this allows pedestrians to at least maybe cross or get ahead of the vehicles to be a little bit more noticed when they're crossing the street. There's a huge safety impact here, and it's a very positive one. I know the City of San Mateo installed the LPIs, Lead Pedestrian Intervals, in downtown San Mateo a few years ago, and people don't realize that El Camino is Caltrans property, and so I know it took a long time for it to happen there on Caltrans right away. So I just want to thank the city council, the Department of Public Works, and their cohorts at Caltrans for installing the lead pedestrian intervals along El Camino in downtown. It's a huge pedestrian safety improvement, and I really just wanted to make sure that you guys were thanked for it. So thank you very much for all your effort and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Our next speaker is Kalen Salander.
Hello, honorable members of the city council. My name is Kalen Salander, and I'm a resident of your city. I am here today as a member of the 2021 Supervisorial District Lines Advisory Commission. This all-volunteer commission is right now performing a mission fundamental to our democracy, helping to ensure all residents of San Mateo County have equal representation. We do that by using 2020 census data. New population figures are being used to draw lines so San Mateo County's five supervisory districts have close to the same number of people. But this is more than a numbers game. Districts should also fairly represent communities with shared needs and interests. On behalf of the commission, I invite you and everyone watching or listening to this meeting to get involved in this important process. As a first step, I encourage everyone to go to smcdistrictlines.org. That's smcdistrictlines.org, where you will find a wealth of information and ways to participate. We want to hear from you about what you consider your community to be. You can fill out a survey in English, Chinese, Spanish, or Tagalog. You can share your opinions and comment on Facebook and Twitter using the hashtag #SMCDistrictLines. You can also participate in a public meeting. You can find the full schedule again at the website, smcdistrictlines.org. As you as council members know, our elected representatives make decisions that have real impact on our communities. The Board of Supervisors oversees an annual budget of $3.8 billion. Where district lines are drawn impacts who can run for office and which voters can vote for candidates from a district. Once approved, district boundaries will be put in place for the next 10 years. The time to get involved is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kalen. Right now, we only have another minute left in the 15-minute timing. There are four additional speakers. I ask for the will of council. Do you want to continue with public comment, or do you want to push the remaining four speakers to the end of the meeting?
You're just looking for a consensus, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Joe, was that a thumbs up for continuing now?
Yeah, I would say just let's finish up and do it now, the last four speakers.
Thank you. Diane, yes?
I concur.
Thank you. I concur also. Let's go on, Madam Clerk.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, then, is a telephone call-in with the number ending 500.
Hello, this is Joe Delasantina. I'm an attorney and resident of 900 South El Dorado Block.
Joe, we have an echo behind you. Can you please do something to stop that, if possible?
Yeah, the neighbors are going to turn off the speaker right now. I think it's off, yeah. So I'm an attorney. I represent five different people that are here tonight that have also signed a petition demanding that the city put this overlay of South El Dorado on the agenda for public input. None of us received input from the city that this was going to happen. You've received not just the petition that I submitted through my paperwork with every single lot on our block of 900 South El Dorado, but I do know that there is at least one other document that's been submitted with another 40 signatures. There are probably some overlap on it, but the simple fact is, nobody here wants the overlay. They're concerned about their safety. We've provided the information to the city that shows that accident reconstruction figures that are used by the Highway Patrol and every police department in the United States, that asphalt overlays are far less safe than concrete. I have contacted both Caltrans and Vanguard Construction's number-one concrete overlayer for Northern California, and they have concurred that the proper measure to address our street is to grind it where there's faulting and to patch any significant cracks in excess of a quarter of an inch, or actually, in some cases, half an inch. There is nothing that needs to be done to this street, but what I will tell you is this: My clients have instructed me to send out not only complaint forms against the city should anyone ever be injured, because this issue has not been recognized and dealt with appropriately. And they have also instructed me to provide basic information free of charge to any person injured on the street if it goes forward. They're livid. You can't see the 25 or so people that were here this evening because it's so dark, but they're all sitting here in the cold on the street to address this issue. And I would ask that you consider putting this on the agenda and table any further construction on the street besides remediation of the actual concrete damage that was recently caused by Cal Water when they tore up the street to redo the water lines. Everyone here can speak up if they want to speak up, but the simple reality is that they need input, and they're pissed. And quite frankly, I'm a little pissed, too, because I do live here, and I've got a couple of kids I've got to watch out for. And I'll tell you, if one of them gets hurt, I will be the first person to fill out the form. I think that's it. If you want to ask any questions, there's a number of people here that, in fact, I've lived and had property over 42 years. I know there's another gentleman, Ed, that's been here for far more than I have, although he won't admit how many years, and I think he's waiting to speak. So if he is waiting to speak, I'd like to put him on.
You have time. One minute.
I'm good. I think you heard. The people have sent you in the paperwork. They want it on the agenda, and they want to be heard.
Okay. Thank you very much for calling, Mr. Delasantina. I think if you have sent something, then we will be in receipt of that, and we will give it due process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Glenn Olson.
Good evening, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. My name is actually not Glenn Olson. I'm still logged into a colleague's Zoom account, so apologies for that. My name is actually Stephanie Caston, and I'm a resident of San Mateo, again now after being born and raised here. I'm so happy to be back in San Mateo now with my husband and family, but as for renters, I see now more than ever that many members of our community are struggling to stay here as we're still impacted by pandemic job loss, wage reduction, and illness. I recently emailed to encourage the council to make a priority of eviction protections and to adopt measures that will help keep San Mateo renters in their homes. I know that the city has a lot on its plate, and the staff's probably very busy, but I also believe that it's been about three years since the study session was convened to consider a menu of policies to safeguard the interests of renters. I believe that the date of this study session was September 4, 2018, and to my knowledge, none of the policies that were discussed at that time have been acted on. I see this issue as pressing and time-sensitive, so with all due respect, I do want to ask when the question of renter protections will take a priority position on the council agenda.
Okay, so thank you very much. Since this is a public comment period, we are under state law not allowed to respond to questions or anything that is actually not on the agenda tonight. But believe me, your thoughts have been registered previously by others. We're aware of this, and if you want to reach out to me personally at another time, I'd be happy to talk with you about my personal feelings on it. I don't know how other council members feel, but feel free to reach out to me, and that's about all we can do right now.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brianna Williams.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brianna Williams. Thank you for letting me speak. This is the first time I'm attending a city hall meeting. I want to start off by saying I'm a new resident here in San Mateo. I moved here September 5 to Hillsdale Garden Apartments with my family and three children, three under two, including two newborn twins. Two days later, there were cockroaches, and we've been suffering with them ever since. I notified management as soon as I had seen the first ones in my children's room. Their reply should shock everyone. They weren't surprised nor sympathetic. They notified us that pest control would be there Tuesday and asked if I wanted to be put on the list. It did not get there Tuesday and did not get there until the following Tuesday. I did not know whether to pack or unpack, but I had to unpack, only to pack again for treatment, something I have done three times since I've moved here, having to leave six hours at a time with three babies. This treatment to tenants by management is nothing new, a years-long problem, and I'm wondering if the county or city is complicit. Essex Apartment Homes owns several communities in our city as well as others, and all have serious negative reviews and experiences from former, current, and prospective tenants. What they have going on here is highly illegal. They have fake documents with not only me but other residents, and have forced them to live in poor conditions. Who knows how long they intended to keep me and my family in this situation for? The neighbors have had cockroaches for at least three years under the promise of repeated treatment. There's no way that they had no idea of the severity of the problem when I moved here. It should not have been rented out under California laws. Everyone in this building has been living with cockroaches unaware of their rights. Management did not want to pay for moving costs and only promised to do so when I told them I'd advise each tenant of their rights, and they agreed. Is this a status quo? Are we letting corporate businesses come to our city and treat our tenants however they want, because that is what is happening here? I notified the city as soon as I received the unsurprised response from management, only to be told that I had to wait a reasonable time to fix the problem when I had just moved here. Is this the way things are handled when a new tenant is tricked into moving into a cockroach-infested unit? I have seen over 50 cockroaches since I've moved here and have to beg management to do treatments. They have lied and continuously said there is no activity, and that the city code enforcer also found no activity, even though I was with her and showed her a cockroach on the wall that was left from last night, the fourth one I had seen in less than a six-hour timeframe. The city has a relocation allowance program for these exact situations, and I want it used for each resident in this building. This plan also allows the right to sue for more than 2,000 that Essex conveniently included in the lease and would make it void. Anything less is a slap on the wrist to this company, and they need to be held accountable. The truth is easy to find about this company, just read the reviews.
Thank you for your comments. I'd like to ask if maybe the city manager would like to respond to that at all?
Yeah, I would. This is the first I'm learning of this particular instance. Ms. Williams, if you could reach out to me directly, I'd like to talk with you so we can see if we can get it resolved.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And the last speaker is J.D.
J.D., you'll need to unmute yourself. Hi there. I'm responding to the South El Dorado Street issue with the asphalt overlay. I have young children. We live on this street. We're really close to Center Bray School, and there are a number of people who drive incredibly fast down this street, and my understanding from the research that I've been provided and I've done is that it takes a lot longer for trucks, delivery trucks, that being Amazon, UPS, even the cars that come to the school. There are an incredible amount of people that park on our street and shortcut through our street, driving fairly fast, and so with this asphalt overlay, I am quite concerned with the children attending school. I see them crossing at Ninth Street as well, where there's no stop sign, so I'm seeing families dashing across the street in any kind of condition, especially in, you know, raining conditions. I'm quite concerned with the safety on this street, and I think that needs to be noted. I think it needs to be really, really noted that there's a school here, people park on our street, they're unloading their children to attend Center Bray School, and I think that that needs to be something that is incredibly brought forward and to your attention.
Thank you very much, J.D., for your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, there are no further speakers.
Okay, then we will close public comment and move on to the next part of the agenda, which at this point... which at this point is public hearing on item 13, the 2022 solid waste collection rates increase. I'm going to switch over now to our special script for this matter. Roxanne, did you want to say anything first?
I want to say thank you and, um, Honorable Mayor, our Deputy Mayor of our, uh, Benia and members of the City Council. Um, thank you for taking time to consider this rate, the 2022 rates. Um, if you can just give me a second, hopefully share my screen. We all know I seem to have difficulties in the past. Are you able to see the screen?
No. Now we are.
Okay. Success. Last time I didn't have, I wasn't able to help, so hopefully you can see it. Um, again, this is to review the 2022 cost of collection for solid waste and your consideration for the rates. Uh, although I can't seem to get my screen to move. Uh-oh. Oh, here we go. So the annual rate review processes, as it says, it's annual. The council will review, reviews the services and approves those or, um, considers the approval annually. The rates covered the costs should cover the cost of collection, the cost of processing and disposal, and all city fees related to solid waste. They're effective from the beginning of the year, January 1st to December 31st. And the city has chosen to follow the Prop 218 notification process, where we sent a 218 notification of the public hearing to all, uh, property tax, city property taxpayers, as well as to all recology ratepayers. In May, we, on May 3rd, we had a study session, um, with the council and asked for council direction going forward on the cost of solid waste services. Um, we, the rates, what came from the direction from the council was solid waste rates should cover the cost of the provided services. Currently, to service a cart, which is what we most, um, we have four cart sizes, 20, 32, um, 64, and 96 gallon carts for, uh, residential services. The cost to service a can, just the cost to service, not the cost of disposals, about $49 a month for the three trucks to come weekly to the home. That we also need to make sure that we, uh, had, were forward thinking. Um, state senate bill 1383 is a short-lived climate action, um, ordinance, which will go into effect, it will in fact, January 1st of this year, but becomes, has to be on, uh, established as a city ordinance and enforceable as of next year. Um, requires 75% of organic debris that currently goes that as of 2014 was going into a landfill needs to be diverted to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And that's huge, that not, and that's for, effective for every resident, every commercial business in the city. So that includes green waste, food waste, 75% what was going in in 2014 needs to be diverted from landfill. That's going to take, our residents are doing quite well. Our commercial services still need some help and our multifamilies. So it's going to take a lot of outreach, training, and work to get right-sized carts and get organic service in all of our commercial sector. Develop a one-year rate review plan for 2022 with these cost considerations, the cost of service, the proposed senate bill, and look at future years. How can we better plan for future years? We need, we had in 2018, the council established a rate stabilization fund, which should be, we used last year because knowing it was economic hard times for our residents and, and our businesses due to COVID and short, um, lack of money, we, we did not increase rates for 2021. And the, the rate stabilization fund was used to offset the, the cost increases. We want to, you continue to use that, but be mindful of it, maintain a minimum balance. So we have it there to soften rates as they go up. But we can't use it to wait, deplete it. We need to have to have a minimum balance. And consider a five-year rate structure where we can possibly send out, instead of having an annual notice, a five-year notice that would go out so people can see over the five-year span of time, um, how their rates will be affected. This gives you a bit of a breakdown of the cost of, of services. Um, this is recology's base compensation cost for coming, collecting the services for commercial and multi, and residential. SB 1383 for the first year, it's estimated it'll be close, working with recology, the South Bay, um, with our Waste Authority and with the county. Probably the first year will be probably 400, close to $450,000 is the estimate. The cost of disposals, just about $8 million. And then the, the city fees for litter abatement, the, uh, trash reduction program, and the capital reserve. That's for, um, our capital projects to reduce litter or debris going into our storm drains, which are required and mandated by the municipal regional plan. The city franchise fee and the landfill closure fee, which is a fixed fee to maintain the cost of the landfill closure on Third Avenue. The total revenue requirement is, um, $27,411,000. If, uh, with the proposed rates, uh, increase, we'll still be short about a million two or a million 280,000. And we will use reserves that we have from the rate stabilization fund to offset those costs. Again, it's a hu, we have 80% of our residents have a 32 or a 20-gallon can. You can see the cost of service, again, not the cost of disposal, just the cost to collect is about $49. And we're charging currently $15.19 for a 20-gallon can. And 60% of our residents have a 32-gallon can. We're charging $24. We knew we couldn't just automatically increase rates to the $49 fee of the cost of disposal, but how can we soften that blow? How can we get closer to the cost of actual services to shore up some of that shortfall? So it was looked at as for the first year, a $4 increase. It's a straight increase of $4 across for the 20-gallon can and a 32-gallon can. It would be a $2 increase for the 64 and 96 gallon, because they are closer to covering the cost of the service. But again, their cost of disposal is much higher, so you can see it reflected in the monthly bill. On the 218 notice that went out, it included on the total monthly cost, the landfill closure fee, which is 40 cents for a 20-gallon cart, a 32, uh, 64 for a 32, and a dollar 41 for the 64 and 239 for the 96-gallon carts. Again, that's a fixed fee. It has not been raised in over five years. So these are the total monthly cost on the right. Um, we're asking for, uh, uh, this year, uh, not to increase a $4 monthly cost for a 20 and 32-gallon residential cart and for the commercial garbage cart and for the organics cart. And a six, a $2 increase for the 64 and 96 residential, commercial garbage carts and organic cart. And then not to exceed 2% for the metal bins. The metal bins for the commercial sector are basically covering their cost of services, but there is the anticipated cost associated with SB 1383 for organic debris collection, which will require more trucks on the road, more outreach. And again, we have to, these are state mandates that we have to meet. We wanted to give you an overall idea, like where are we with compared to our other, um, member agencies within our Waste Authority? And this gives you a projected view from Belmont to East Pal, from Burlingame to East Palo Alto. Recology covers those carts, the cost of service. We're the first jurisdiction to go out for the rate increase and ask for the public hearing. So we're looking at our proposed 2022 costs versus our member agencies' 2021 costs. So again, all the member agencies will be going out to their jurisdictions, asking for a rate increase, but we don't know what those are as of today, so this compares. And you can see, even compared to the overall average of the SBW, the Waste Authority's, um, member agencies, we're still right below the average. If you can see for, um, a 96-gallon cart, where we are, we're well below, we're in the average. And only again, less than 10%, I think it's less than 5% of our residents have a 96-gallon cart. For a 64-gallon cart, again, we're below the average. Excuse me, excuse me, for 64, we're below the average. For a 32, we're right, our 2022 proposed cost, with the exception of Foster City, we're still at the average or well below the average of our member agencies. And for a 20-gallon cart, we're right in the middle. Um, we're below Burlingame, Foster City, and Redwood City. But again, these are comparing them to their 21 costs. So now we're asking you to, um, give you a review of the timeline. We went in May to the study session, asking for direction. We mailed per council directive, um, a public notice to, again, to all of our ratepayers and to all our property owners on, in August. Um, we, the notice went out on the 23rd, giving well more than the 45-day public notice. Um, today is a public hearing, and if approved, it would become effective January 1st of 2022. At this time, I'll ask, um, Madam Clerk to, um, ask for clarifying questions, open, if possible, the public hearing for public comment, and then go forward with the, uh, written protest and see if the thresholds have been met and then ask to adopt.
Thank you very much, Roxanne. So then we bring it back to the council. I'm going to ask if there are any questions from the council. Okay. Am I seeing shaking heads? Is that what I'm just now saying? Or is, no comments? Okay. Seeing no questions. Yes? No. Seeing no questions, then I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and received by the city council for consideration.
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we have one hand raised.
Okay. Can I finish reading the statement here? So we, so I will finish making the announcement here. Oh, wait a minute. Okay. We'll have public comment first. I'm just reading my script. Thank you.
That's okay. Uh, Shane from the spot, you've been allowed to talk if you could unmute yourself.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Um, I'm all for everything for the city. Um, but recology needs to do a little bit more, um, besides the numbers and stuff, because they're not cleaning the cans behind the shop. There, the, we've already got a conversation with the supervisor and nothing's being done.
What are you doing?
Is that, are those your comments, Mr. Shane? Okay, it looks like he is muted. Next commenter. Is that all? Okay. At this time, if you want to comment, this is your time. Go ahead and raise your hand and unmute yourself. Okay. Seeing none, then I'm going to close this public comment period. And say that at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? Okay, I already did that. Comments are limited to, okay, we did that. Um, per speaker received by the city council, but only written protests will be tabulated towards a determination of whether a majority protest exists. Written protests may be submitted until the end of this public hearing by dropping them through the mail slot on the main front doors of the city hall visitor parking lot at 3:30 West 20th Avenue. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional hands raised here for public comment? I see that on the script, so. Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, Madam Clerk, will you check for additional public comment at the door? So at this time, we're going to pause. We're going to give people time to come and drop their, uh, comments written, their written protests through the door there. Uh, after a certain period of time, we'll reopen. Madam Clerk, do you have any idea how long that will be?
Uh, we only need a, a minute or so. Uh, Deputy Clerk Joan Diskin is checking the mailbox at the front door right now.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor? Yeah. Um, this is Roxanne again. I'm, I'm glad to contact Shane tomorrow regarding his cans and see if we can be of assistance.
Thank you very much. I'm sure he appreciates that and so do I.
Still, there are no additional public protests at the front door, so.
Okay. Since we have determined there are no more public protests coming in, I'm now going to close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, have you determined whether majority protest exists?
We have tallied all of the written protests to the proposed increase in the solid waste recycling and organic collection for the 2022 rate year. And there were 28,677 notices mailed to property owners on the tax roll. And a majority would require one more than half that number, which would be 14,340. The number of protests received is 34. Based on that, it is clear that a majority of owners have not protested the fee increase and the council is free to take action to increase or otherwise modify the fee.
Okay. That said, then I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any additional questions? Do you want to comment or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion. I understand about me, Roxanne Murray's last time doing this. So I'd like to have the honor of making the motion. Thank you for always being so thorough and comprehensive.
Thank you.
Okay, well, do we have a second?
Yes, I want a second.
I want a second.
Especially if we're not going to see Roxanne. Roxanne's still going to come back and say hi to us anyway. Should, should take good care of us. We love you, Roxanne.
Thank you. And I'll be back in two weeks with something else, so.
Okay, I'll get the next second.
Madam Clerk? Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, I think we need a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gorthos?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Benia?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to item 14, which is temporary outdoor dining program extension. And I think we're going to have a presentation from Kathy Kleinbaum.
Just give me a moment to get my screen up. Does everybody see my screen?
Yes.
And you see it in the proper mode?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, so good evening, members of the council. I'm here tonight with another extension of our temporary outdoor dining program. Um, so just as a reminder of where we've been, our temporary outdoor dining program was initially established in June of 2020. At the time, we thought it was only going to be for a few months. Um, instead, I have been back before you several times over the last year plus, extending this program. Most recently, we extended it in June 2021. Um, at that time, we extended it till the end of this calendar year and at the same time adopted a parklet program to allow businesses to have parklets beyond the COVID pandemic. In addition, we at the same time worked through the process to permanently close sections of B Street and create pedestrian malls between First and Third Avenues, which actually, um, the last action was at the very last council meeting, where it's now official that those two segments of the street are permanently closed. So again, I'm here tonight for the extension of the temporary outdoor dining program. So, um, back when we last extended it in June, the state had just removed all capacity limitations and allowed restaurants and bars to have full indoor capacity again. At the time, we were hopeful that, um, we would sort of get through the summer months and allow businesses to transition to long-term parklets if they wanted to keep them, um, by the end of the calendar year. However, we did not anticipate the Delta variant and the, the surge of COVID that occurred, um, just a few months ago. As a result, we are requesting to continue the outdoor dining program through the end of April, which will allow businesses to keep all the outdoor structures that they currently have with roofs and, and a lot of the businesses that may not want permanent parklets, um, a few months longer to get through the winter months, um, because outdoor activities continue to be strongly recommended to help reduce the spread of COVID. Um, again, we hope that businesses after this, this hopefully last extension will be able to trans, transform their parklets into the more permanent format that we have passed the, the new law for. The second item I'm here before you tonight is to talk about the lane closure on B Street between Baldwin and First Avenue. So the temporary street closures that we put in place during the pandemic included the two blocks that we now have created pedestrian malls out of, as well as the singular lane closure on the block between Baldwin and First. The reason why this wasn't a full street closure was there is a private parking lot and driveway on the opposite side of the street that, um, the businesses there were very, um, very strongly in favor of keeping open. So, um, again, there is this single lane closure that only allows for traffic going northbound. So you can turn from First Avenue, but if you are approaching B Street from Baldwin, your only option is to turn left, um, towards North B Street. And, um, staff does feel this has created somewhat of a dangerous condition. And staff does feel this has created somewhat of a dangerous condition. So the authority for the lane closure again was part of the temporary street closures, and that authority was passed by resolution and will expire December 31st. Those other segments now no longer need the temporary authority because they're pedestrian malls and have permanent authority. So the concerns that we have with this particular lane closure is cars are ignoring the no-turn signs coming off of Baldwin, and I've personally witnessed, I've heard other staff say that they are witnessing a lot of cars driving in the wrong direction on this single lane closure. It is a very confusing intersection right now with the construction at the former track site going on. When you get to that intersection, even though there's the no right turn signs, it's sometimes a little unclear where you can go because of all the temporary barricades. So I just don't feel confident recommending that we extend this lane closure through April along with the rest of the temporary outdoor dining. Instead, I recommend that we transition the lane closure to a common parklet and just use the parking stall portion of the street. Unfortunately, it is parallel parking, so it isn't super big area. So this will significantly reduce the amount of outdoor dining that the four businesses that are currently using this lane closure have. However, the amount of outdoor space that they will have is more in line with what a lot of other businesses in the downtown have been provided throughout the pandemic. But again, it is we do recognize that it will be an impact to their operations and what they've been able to enjoy thus far. So the two actions before you tonight are to adopt the resolution to hopefully for the last time extend the temporary outdoor dining program through the end of April. And then I'm looking for council direction on whether you support staff's recommendation to not continue the temporary lane closure beyond December 31st of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kathy. So council members, do we have any questions? It sounds like no. I have a question. I received a letter from Sarko's Lockworks around the corner on Baldwin, and he has been severely impacted by having a lack of parking for a very long time now. As a locksmith, many of the people that come to him need their new keys, they can't find any parking, some are elderly, some are handicapped, other ones just can't find parking. He requested if we could consider putting some temporary, I mean, some 24-minute parking spaces at the end of the what is currently the dining enclosure for, I guess, Worst Hall, which extends all the way from B Street to Baldwin. And so I'd like to ask if that is something we could, since it's not really a part of the report tonight or agendas, I guess, but could we look at that?
So absolutely, that is something we're going to be looking at. So originally, that parklet that's on the Baldwin side was shared by Worst Hall and 31st and Union, and I think when 31st and Union closed, Worst Hall kind of crept into that space. There's a new tenant that's moving into the 31st and Union space. They actually sent a letter, which came a little bit late on the dais, to the council. And they are also asking for, because they're more of a to-go business, Jennifer actually referenced them during her presentation earlier. So they have asked for those parking spaces to be reopened. So along Baldwin, the that large common parklet will be sort of pulled back to be just to the frontage of Worst Hall, and that's been a consistent policy that we've tried to put in place throughout this. Whenever a restaurant's closed, we're trying to, you know, remove the parklets for that restaurant because it often can take six months or plus more for a new restaurant to move into the space, and parking spaces are precious, especially on-street spaces downtown. So that will be taken care of. Jennifer will work with with the business to give them a little bit of time to move some of their outdoor furnishings and adjust that parklet that currently exists on Baldwin.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions, council members?
I have a related question. We had heard some feedback about some of the ADA spaces or accessibility spaces, handicap parking spaces and their availability. Is that something that's going to be folded into the the analysis and sort of like a permanent implementation of the pedestrian malls?
Absolutely. So there are some handicap spaces that are available, you know, right around the corner in the main street garage, and we'll be making sure in the immediate area, whether it's on-street or in those off-street locations, that there is an adequate supply of handicap parking.
And and just as as a point of reference, is is it so that our there has been like pretty ample supply of parking in the parking garage adjacent to to those businesses mentioned?
In my experience, when I've been downtown, and this is just my anecdotal experience, I have seen ample supply of parking. So on the first level, if you're in the main street garage entering off of Second, there's a huge row of ADA spaces. I haven't personally witnessed all of those being full. And at least in the main street garage, the basement level continues to be, this is non- ADA for for more able-bodied folk, the basement level has been a ghost town, empty spaces all around. So we haven't seen, and this will come up in the presentation immediately following this, so Ellen will be given, we haven't seen parking demand return to its prior levels pre-pandemic, at least in our off-street parking structures. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, seeing no more questions, we'll move on to public comment on the sec.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The first speaker will be Louis Cohen.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting me have a little time. I won't belabor the point, but at our DSMA board meeting last Tuesday, we did talk about the extension of the parklets through the end of April, and my board was overwhelmingly favorable to doing so. It's been a great help to the businesses downtown and appreciate city staff's efforts in this direction. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. The next speaker is Tyson Mau.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tyson Mau. I am the owner of Worst Hall. My ask this evening is to maintain the status quo of the parklet on Baldwin Avenue and the lane closure on B Street through April 30th. Really quickly, I just wanted to apologize that we didn't raise this issue earlier. The four business owners were a little bit into the city processes, but we will remain engaged with the city on all matters going forward. Regarding B Street, the space on B Street has been beneficial for all four businesses. We would like the city to consider an extension of the lane closure through April 30th. We understand there are some concerns about the safety due to cars turning the wrong way, and I have two items I'd like to propose. First is that the current visibility of the signage in that area has been poor. Frequently, the sign doesn't stay standing up, or it's generally hard to see. We understand that the temporary lane closure means that the signage is also temporary, but we believe that better signage would significantly reduce the number of incidences of wrong-way drivers. And we'd be willing to help fund such an effort, as we understand the city may be wary of investing more resources into a temporary situation. Second, we believe that some fraction of the unsafe drivers are due to DoorDash pickups. Worst Hall has discontinued DoorDash pickups, and we hope that this will improve the safety of that street. Beyond this, I can also mention that the four businesses, Worst Hall, Joy Sushi, O'Neil's and Jeffries, are working together to design a permanent parklet. I believe that a collaboration with our businesses will produce a cohesive design that will ultimately result in a better product for San Mateo residents. But one item of consideration, and I understand that there will be a process, I would like to consider a permanent lane closure or permanent street closure. I know this isn't an item to be discussed or addressed today, but we have been in discussions with Prometheus Group about future plans. Regarding Baldwin Avenue, the ask is Worst Hall would like to keep status quo on Baldwin Avenue through April 30th. The space outside of Baldwin has been invaluable to our business, and I believe that it has provided a safe, enjoyable environment for San Mateo residents. The landlord is supportive of our business maintaining the space on Baldwin Avenue, but as we are the long-term tenant paying at market rent, and the commitment of the two service businesses on Baldwin Avenue are currently month-to-month, and their future is uncertain, especially due to their inability to produce market rental income for the landlord. Also, parking spaces along Baldwin Street would be unlikely use for the service businesses on Baldwin Avenue, as Worst Hall's business is orders of magnitude, likely two orders of magnitude larger than the combination of both of these businesses in both tax revenue for the city and in the number of customers. Most likely, if those parking spaces were open, they would be utilized by Worst Hall patrons simply due to numbers, and it makes more sense for the landlord to keep the status quo as we have capacity to generate significantly more revenue per square foot per hour. The new business, Bike Kitchen, does not have parking spaces in front of their storefront. It's a fire zone, but we will work with them and the landlord to find a suitable situation.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julie Hanna. And Julie, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I am also currently a business owner on Baldwin Avenue, right next to Sarko's, and we have a hair business. And I understand, you know, Worst Hall's desire to keep the full space open. But we do have elderly clients who would like to be able to walk easier to the salon. Also, many of our clients are late because there's no parking around as well. So just want to voice that, that we've been in we've been in that location for 20 years and just it's it just seems excessive to me to to have the whole space taken in front of the salon. So I would certainly agree if we could have those two end parking lots at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. The next speaker is Sarko's Lockworks.
Good evening, honorable members of the City Council of San Mateo. I will be speaking on behalf of Sarko's Lockworks this evening. Thank you for reading our comments from earlier this evening. We thank you for your consideration for additional parking spaces along the block of Baldwin. And taking a look at the downtown San Mateo area, we've seen multiple multiple streets where three or four spots have been reserved for cars next to parklets occupied by restaurants. And I think in terms of our business, obviously with the construction going on across the street, with multiple construction vehicles as well as others, there's been a very great difficulty for both residents and for commercial businesses to find parking in that general vicinity, particularly along that block. So again, we greatly appreciate your time in considering providing two or three spaces along the front end of that block for those three businesses that will greatly benefit by having the parking spaces provided. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Ken Kuhohara.
Hi, actually, I'm Jaden Kuhohara, and I'm speaking for the property owners of Baldwin Properties, and we own the building where Worst Hall and Sarko and Joseph's business, as well as the the whole block. Anyway, I'm talking in support of Worst Hall and the restaurants, especially on B Street, as well as on Baldwin. We understand that the other businesses need parking. We don't mind where 31st Union was to open those parking spaces, but really, I believe he had about two or three parking spots. But we like to extend that and keep the area where Sarko's is, as well as Joseph, open for Worst Hall. And so we really, it's hard because we see that you're closing B Street, and so we're trying to really allow those businesses to thrive. And if you close Baldwin Street, it's making it harder for our tenants who actually pay market rent and who are helping us on pay the expenses like property taxes, PG&E, garbage, which you just approved. And so it's really hard because we, as owners, did not get PPP loans, whereas all the restaurants and a lot of other businesses did. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, we have no other speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just a couple notes there. Okay, bring it back to the councils. Any comments? Additional questions? This is a item where we we have, I believe, a resolution or a resolution.
I'll go first. So I really approach this from the perspective of wanting to close as much of the street as possible, wanting to keep businesses open, wanting to support the businesses. But what I am hearing from staff is that this is a significant safety issue and not one that can be addressed just with better signage, unfortunately. And so I really, as much as I would like to close as much of the street as possible, I think that staff are absolutely correct, and we can't create a danger on B Street. And so I would support a parklet, even a permanent parklet, but not a not a lane closure anymore, not giving the safety hazard. We just we can't afford to have pedestrians on B Street get injured.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gothles. I want to ask Kathy, do you have a slide we can look at while we're maybe thinking about this?
With the two actions, I can put that back.
Please put that up while we're talking. Any other comments? Okay, well, then I have some comments.
I was about to make a motion, Deputy Mayor. That's all right.
I just I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is it that we are not taking up this idea of some additional parking for Sarko's and the Hair Salon because what might be going in 31st and Union? I can't, how is that going to be handled? We've got two questions here. I don't see that part of it.
Sure. So that, you know, generally, our policy has been if a restaurant, so the reason why the Worst Hall parklet along Baldwin was as large as it was because it was shared by two businesses, it spanned from Worst Hall to 31st and Union. So that was more of an administrative action, like when 31st and Union closed, we probably should have pushed it back at that point in time. But now with the new business coming in that absolutely has stated they they want the parking and the two adjacent businesses also with their comments tonight, it's generally been staff policy to try as much as possible to keep the parklets to the frontage of the restaurants, to not impact other adjacent retail businesses when possible. If council wants to direct staff to do otherwise, that's fine, but generally, our administrative policy has been to, again, keep parklets to the frontage of the business so that the other adjacent businesses can have adequate parking supply.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. You want me to go, or did you want to go?
No, I have a question. Regarding the resolution for temporary outdoor dining extension, that's all of the outdoor dining we see throughout downtown San Mateo?
Yes, and not just downtown, 25th Avenue and the other commercial districts in the city.
Okay, good. Okay, well, yes, if anybody's willing to make a motion based on what we've heard, please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I would move that we adopt the resolution to extend the temporary outdoor dining through April 30th. And I, do you need two separate motions?
The last one is more direction.
I see. Okay. So let's take the first one first, then do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt a resolution, Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothles?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Do we have a motion for the second question?
Well, I think I think that it would help to have some clarification. It seems like there's confusion from the public comment. Kathy, do you mind just reiterating exactly what we're talking about in terms of the the lane closure versus the parklets on on Baldwin, at B and Baldwin? Because it seems to me that there's some confusion from the public about, you know, the demand for parking, and if we close, if we reopen the lane, that doesn't solve for parking. If the parklets are maintained. If the parklets are maintained.
So there's really two separate things that I think the public comments are addressing. So the lane closure again is on B Street between First and Baldwin, and you can see this, I don't know if you can see my mouse or not. But, so this would be pulled back to be just in the parking lane where you see those parked cars. So it would be pretty significantly reduced by more than half in width, but it still would provide outdoor dining. Worst Hall actually, because of their corner location, has outdoor dining there as well as along the side of their building. And I apologize that I don't have a full picture. But they have sort of a slightly larger than the parking space parklet because Baldwin just happens to have like extra width, and so we allowed for it. That currently goes the entire length of the block between B Street and I, I think it's Ellsworth is the next block up. My bad for not remembering. And it was again, shared by Worst Hall and 31st Union, which is on the opposite corner. So that the extension of the outdoor dining would allow that parklet to stay in place through April 30th of next year. However, because 31st Union is no longer in business and the business taking over doesn't want it, that parklet per staff policy would be shortened to be to the front edge of Worst Hall to, to allow for the businesses on the remainder of the block to have access to the parking spaces that were there. And if, again, if, if council doesn't support staff taking that action, that's certainly an option for direction.
Well, personally, I, I think that the policy, you know, applying the policy consistently to the front edge of the of the business is appropriate. And in terms of the, just talking through what will happen along B Street in that section, that section. So what, what I, what I understand is we're discussing the lane closure and so removing the lane closure would, would allow for continuation of the parklets if the businesses choose to opt into the parklets program. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And we would sort of just move the barricades in to provide them with a sort of COVID temporary parklet without them needing to construct anything on their own. But it would just be less space than like we have.
And as horizontal spaces, they would be getting very comparable and even in some ways more space than some of the other parklets that are horizontal, or not, or that are perpendicular or diagonal. So, so from, you know, a, from that relative perspective, maintaining sort of a fair proportion of parklet space on the front edge of the business. But allowing for two-way circulation is, is what is being proposed.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Looks like Prasanna wants to jump in.
Yes, thank you. Briefly, procedural note. So the resolution that the council just passed, of course, extended timeline for the outdoor dining guidelines. That was extended through April of next year. And then separate and apart from that, I believe staff is simply asking for direction that as to not extending the lane closure, that's on the screen in front of you, beyond December 31st of this year, when it's otherwise going to expire. And I think staff is seeking some council direction on, on that point as opposed to a forward motion, although Kathy, I'd ask you to jump in if any of that needs clarification.
No, that's exactly what I was asking for. Thank you. Sorry if it was unclear.
If I, if I made, those, that is okay with me, to reduce it to the size of the parking and then as Councilmember Lee said, we'll on Baldwin, keep it consistent with what we've done to the remainder of the city, which is in front of the storefront. That's where I am on it.
Yeah, I concur with that thinking also.
I agree. And, and personally, I, I have witnessed some very dangerous driving in that area, and I think that we're on borrowed time.
Councilmember Gothols, comments?
Agreed. I, no, I agree.
Okay, good. Then I think you might have the direction you need.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we move gleefully onto item 15, Downtown Parking Policy Update and Comprehensive Fee Schedule Amendment. We're going to have Sue Ellen talk with us about.
Just for the record, I am gleeful.
Thank you. I could tell.
Just a moment while I get my PowerPoint up. Okay, are we all set?
Yes.
Great. Deputy Mayor Bonilla, council members, thank you for having me. Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner with Public Works, here tonight on Downtown Parking Policy Update and Comprehensive Fee Schedule Amendment. For some background on this item, the Kikiu Crossing Affordable Housing Project and Parking Garage Project are slated to begin construction at our existing Fourth and Claremont and Fifth and Claremont surface parking lots. And these parking lots currently offer our low-cost parking options in the downtown with hourly parking rates at 25 cents per hour and monthly parking permits at $40 per hour. These low, low parking, low-cost parking options have been historically intended to serve our low-wage workers in the downtown. However, both hourly parking and the monthly permits have been on a first-come, first-served basis. And there's been no qualification for the low-cost parking options. And so it's not, we're not certain that it's reaching the intended audience. The closure of these two surface parking lots ahead of the Kikiu Crossing construction beginning at the beginning of 2022 provides us the opportunity to reevaluate parking options in the downtown to achieve our parking goals. So first is to orient you. Here's our downtown parking environment. North is to the right of the screen. So we have our premium core parking zone, that's our higher cost zone in orange, and then our value or perimeter parking zone in green. So our current low-cost parking options are the two surface parking lots circled in blue. Again, 25 cents per hour and then $40 per month. And additionally, South Railroad Avenue has $40 per month, monthly permits available as well. Looking ahead to maintain low-cost parking options when those two surface lots are closed for construction, and we're looking first at a low-cost monthly permit option. Again, the current low-cost permits are first-come, first-served at specific locations. In order to more equitably serve our low-income workers in the downtown, staff proposes offering a low-cost $40 permit that's available at all of our parking facilities, all of our city-owned parking facilities, that is. And staff proposes to implement qualifications for purchase that will make permits available to those who need them. And those qualifications are in line with existing city programs such as the Parks and Rec Fee Assistance Program and our Public Works On Street Accessible Parking Space Program. To begin, staff proposes allocating about 10% of parking permits at each facility to start to ensure availability, will monitor demand and adjust them as needed to ensure available, that they're available to those who need. Secondly, to maintain the availability of low-cost hourly parking, again, those two surface parking lots offer 25 cents per hour parking, which is not available elsewhere. To continue this option, staff proposes reducing the hourly parking rate at South Railroad Avenue, where we currently have $40 per month permits, to continue to make low-cost options available. That's 88 parking spaces along South Railroad Avenue. So looking to the future, if this proposal is accepted by City Council, the low-cost parking options, low-cost monthly permits would be available at all of our parking facilities throughout the downtown. And then low-cost hourly parking would be available along South Railroad Avenue. Moving on to the premium parking zone, the intent of the two parking zones is to incentivize parking at perimeter locations in the downtown, to encourage users to walk throughout the downtown. Higher-cost parking is available within the core area of the downtown for those who do wish to park closer to certain destinations. Currently, the Main Street Parking Garage is included in that perimeter or value zone. Downtown San Mateo has developed in a way that Main Street Garage is now a central facility within our parking environment. And the Main Street Garage Parking Utilization pre-COVID-19 was on par with Central Parking Garage, which is the only current parking garage within that core area. And staff proposes to adjust parking rates at the Main Street Garage to align with current land uses and to meet the goals of the parking program, to encourage walking in the downtown and parking at the more exterior parking garages. This would involve an increase in the hourly parking rate of 50 cents per hour, from 75 cents per hour to $1.25. And then the monthly permit would increase to $100 per month from $65. So looking again at our current downtown parking environment, if you can see my mouse, Main Street Garage is right down here. Staff's proposal is to include that in the orange premium core parking zone, forgive my artwork, and make that adjustment in the comprehensive fee schedule. So to summarize the recommendations, first, to maintain low-cost hourly parking, staff recommends reducing the hourly parking rate on South Railroad Avenue. To maintain the availability of low-cost parking permits and ensure that they're available to those who qualify, staff recommends introducing a $40 per month permit option for qualifying individuals at all of our city-owned parking garages. And then to better align the premium parking zone with our downtown parking intent, staff recommends adding Main Street Garage to the premium parking zone, where rates will increase to $1.25 per hour and $100 per month. Keeping in mind that if approved, the low-cost parking permit would still be available at Main Street Garage for $40 per month. Formal staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution to amend the adopted 2021 to 22 Comprehensive Fee Schedule to revise downtown parking pass fees and hourly parking fees. And for, in terms of future consideration, as it relates to the Kikiu Crossing project, the construction again at the current surface parking lots will temporarily reduce our parking supply in the downtown by 235 spaces. Given current parking utilization and monthly permit purchase data, staff expects that we will be able to absorb those displaced vehicles, at least in the near future. However, staff will continue to monitor parking demand and utilization as parking demand may rebound in the coming months. If indicated, other options will be considered for increasing the supply of downtown parking, including valet parking options at our city-owned parking facilities, the potential for leasing private parking within the downtown to make that available for public users, and the potential for additional 10-hour parking spaces or full-day parking at locations such as the Main Street Parking Garage. With that, that concludes staff presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So my first question is that how did we arrive at the 10% threshold for the low-income monthly parking passes?
What we initially did was look at the number of parking permits available at Fourth and Fifth and Claremont and try to distribute that across and then make it a semi-round number. But we will monitor the utilization and the demand so that those parking permits are available to those who need them.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, it really sort of derives from a number of conversations I've had with businesses who, who employ low-wage workers and are, are coming to, you know, the conclusion that the lack of parking and specifically the lack of long-term parking is a real barrier to employment. And, and I was wondering, is there a possibility of structuring a sort of a new category of parking, long-term parking permits that would be tied to businesses that are employing people, in which case, you know, depending on who's working and who's, who's on shift, that parking space might be used by multiple employees and actually get more utilization. And, and is there a way to, to kind of slate that in, into the, the menu of options that we're considering? I think what, what we're, what's being proposed is really exciting and, and, and well-conceived. And I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure that it's, it's entirely addressing the, the needs of, of businesses who are employers that are, are seeing, you know, turnover of their employees and wanting to make, you know, wanting to be good stewards to their employees.
Sure. Historically, we've seen high utilization and demand of the parking, the low-cost parking permits that are at the Fourth and Fifth and Claremont surface parking lots. So with those utilized by others, low-cost parking options have not been plentiful in the past. With offering a $40 per month option at all of our city-owned facilities and monitoring demands so that those are available, we do hope to increase the prevalence of affordable parking for those low-income workers in the downtown. And in terms of making permits available by business, that would be a modification to our current permit program. We currently issue permits to individuals and it, the permits are issued by vehicle or license plate number. And, and they are vehicle-specific, so they're not able to be shared among several individuals. If we were to offer a program where businesses were to purchase a permit, we would have to, it would be a different type of program. And, and we would have to do some research into what type of permits might make the most sense in that case. But historically, we have not issued permits to businesses for sharing among employees, and we have not reserved parking spaces for individual businesses or employees.
Okay, well, I, I think that's, I think that that is an idea worth exploring and adding into, adding into the mix here and the conversation. So we'll see what the other council members think.
Other council members? Okay, then I'll make some comment, I mean, ask a question. I too am in favor of keeping parking affordable for low-wage downtown workers. And I appreciate the 88 spaces along South Railroad. I think that's close enough to, to most areas downtown where it'll be very functional. However, I'm wondering about when we're making permits for downtown workers, if we could also, and I don't know, it seems to me like at one point we did this. The lower-cost parking is higher up in the structures. Are we doing that already? Or in the basement at the Main Street Parking of the Theater? That I hear is vacant.
We're, I hear that too. And we're, we're not currently designating specific locations for low-cost parking outside of the surface parking lots and what we're proposing on South Railroad. Currently, the basement of Main Street is three-hour parking, so we differentiate the different levels in our parking garages by hour restrictions rather than cost.
Well, okay, so I understand that. But I think if we're trying to provide options for low-wage workers and I don't know that 88, that was it, right? 88 spaces along South Railroad? And currently, we have 235 spaces there at 25 cents an hour. Actually, I know the owners of several businesses that park in there 25 cents an hour. So I'm thinking maybe it would be worthwhile looking at putting the lower-cost spaces, some additional lower-cost spaces. And if we could designate somehow with their permit that they belong up on the hire, and I know that would probably involve some changes for our enforcement people, or, I'm not sure what all that involves, but could we look at that, please?
We can take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other commenters, then I think we'll open it up to public comment.
Please raise your hand if you wish to comment on this item. Mr. Deputy Mayor, we have no hands raised.
Thank you very much. So then I bring it back to the council, final comments?
I mean, I, I'm ready to make a motion. I, I think it's a, it's a fairly holistic approach. I, I'm, I'm supportive of raising it where you think people can afford and to raise fees and then by, by the same token, enhancing what we are doing for more affordable permits and lower-income permits. I think I think there's some flexibility with the hourly. So if you are a worker who doesn't work perhaps that many hours downtown that you want to spend $40 or can afford to spend $40 on a low-income permit, I'm hopeful that they could take advantage of the hourly. What is the maximum time on the hourly at 25 cents an hour?
I think it's 10 hours.
Yes. And in some locations, we have three-hour restrictions, but that's not where we're recommending.
Okay, so we might be able, at least preliminarily, to see if we can address low-income earners and who aren't maybe putting in enough hours to afford a $40 monthly pass. And then maybe if we find that there's more demand than what we're addressing, we can take a look into this other concept, perhaps, of by business and see if we can provide some flexibility to low-income workers in that part.
Thank you, Diane. I'm going to take your motion and hold it for one second while I make some other comments myself. I really appreciate that we're taking this on right now because it's very timely. As you said, Sue Ellen, going through a lot of changes downtown, we're about to lose that 235 spaces. It is the right time to plan for this. I don't think people understand how hard it is to manage parking. I hear downtown people commenting all the time that, oh, it's just so mismanaged. And then I point out to them the trials and tribulations that we have gone through over the years. And that we continue to make changes, always seeking to improve. So I also support this. But I would like to see if we can also, while monitoring, if there is a need, certainly look for ways to provide more of the low-income parking in some other spaces that are maybe less utilized. So that said, Diane has a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much. That means we're at the time now for reports and announcements. Do any council members have any reports or announcements that they would like to pronounce? Seeing none, then I will move on to staff. Ask them if they have some reports or announcements they'd like to make. Looks like these guys are ready. Okay. Thanks. In that case, seeing that we don't have anybody to adjourn in honor of, I will be happy to call this meeting adjourned at this time. Thank you all very much.